All right, it is seven o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started. I now call the October 4th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the City Council to order. Tonight's invocation is given by Pastor Andrew from Erlanger United Methodist. Come to the podium, and the microphone is already on for you. Thanks for being here.
Let us pray. Precious Lord, we thank you so much for the gift of this day. We thank you for our city. We thank you, God, for all members of our city council and all those who serve within our city. We thank you for them. Lord, we ask that you will continue to guide them, grant them your wisdom, your grace, and your strength. And, Lord, I pray specifically for those in our community that are hurting, that are lonely, that need your touch this evening. So, God, we just pray, and we lift up each and every person. Thank you for your hand of favor upon our city. And, Lord, we look to you for our strength, our wisdom, our guidance. So come, Holy Spirit, come upon this room, upon all who serve, and we pray your blessing and your touch upon them always. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, I ask that you please rise for the pledge. Okay, Mrs. Hoffman, if you can please take role.
Ms. Elmore?
Present.
Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Ms. Kyle?
Present.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Hermes?
Present.
Mr. Doan?
Present.
Mr. Meyer?
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Nicely?
Present.
Mr. Nipper?
Ms. Reckers?
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Here.
Thank you so much. Before I continue, I just wanted to welcome Bill Wolfack. He is our new city administrator. He just started yesterday, so this is his first regular council meeting, so I'd love to give him a warm welcome today. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank Emmy Randall, the Assistant City Administrator, who has sat in this seat for the last several months, and she's been an absolute wonderful advocate for our city and tireless worker, and I appreciate you sitting alongside me and helping me along, so thank you. All right. You've received a copy of the minutes for the September 6th, 2022 Regular Council Meeting along with the September 20th and the September 20th Special Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, all entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Kyle, Ms. Elmore, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. You have also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, all entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Nicely, Ms. Reckers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, so this evening, our business spotlight's been put on hold, so we'll have to come back to Ally's Walkabout probably next month. So we'll go ahead and move to the second special presentation. We have NKYSL presentation, and we have Mr. Mike Delaney here. If you'd like to come to the podium, the microphone is already on and ready for you.
Thank you, Mayor Fetti. Is Chief Rader going to join me now or in a moment? I'll leave that up to you all. Thanks to you, and thanks to all the council for letting us have this few brief moments. Northern Kentucky Cell, which is social emotional learning, maybe some of your children or grandchildren, children that you know in the schools have been under the umbrella of social emotional learning. Northern Kentucky Cell and previously NeuroSparks devised a program that included adults. We happen to think that there was some need for social emotional learning amongst adults in our society. I could be wrong, but as also a retired clergy person, this is kind of my legacy, if you will, my heritage, to do this in retirement. And last year, we gave, presented five recognitions to folks, and we do call them recognitions. I'm going to make a point of that rather than awards, but we presented five for various categories of social emotional learning: bridging, community service, bonding, caregiving, couple of others. It was about a year ago that I hosted a meeting that included a well-known law enforcement personality here in Northern Kentucky and a well-known retired educator. And before our meeting started, in which they thought I was going to lead an organizational meeting and invite them to become more involved, it was really intended to be a panel to talk about COVID in our schools. But they were bantering back and forth, as all of us have done, and complaining about volunteerism. You can't get anybody to do anything these days. I know nobody wants to do anything. I'm guilty, I've said it, when teaching and doing other things, most of us, if not all of us, have said it, nobody wants to do anything anymore. Well, we wanted to present this as a recognition of people here tonight that wanted to do something. Didn't have to, a lot of people could have said, "You can't," but you did. And we want to lift that up, not just for you and not just for Erlanger, but it is our intention as an organization to highlight these kinds of activities and events, so other people will see. And two things will happen. Yes, they'll be inspired to do the same, but maybe they never get recognized. Maybe they do some of these kinds of things, and nobody notices. We want people to notice, at least that you represent them, not just your own efforts and the good that you've done. We're very thankful for that, it's amazing. But we want other people to see and appreciate themselves, because what you really did was not just look at Eastern Kentucky and the devastation, but you looked inside yourselves. And that's what we really want people to do, and then they'll reach out. So, Chief Rader, thank you very much on behalf of Northern Kentucky Cell. Hope you'll receive and accept this recognition.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much for what you've done. Thank you. Say that again. Yeah, she's giving thumbs up, so.
Well, I appreciate it. You know, I won't go through the speech that I gave again a couple weeks ago when we asked for this, but, you know, myself and Assistant Chief Limming and the command staff all kind of thought about this, and, you know, it was the right thing to do, it was the right time, and you guys as council and the mayor, you guys allowed it to happen. So this wasn't just me, it was also you guys, so thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks to all of you.
Thank you so much. Next on the agenda, the Kent County Public Library, I'm sorry, the Erlanger Branch 20th Anniversary. We'll be doing a proclamation at the Kent County Library. We do not have it prepared at the moment, but it is celebrating their 20th year at this building. The Kent County Library, the Erlanger Branch, it is the highest-trafficked library in the state of Kentucky, and we are so blessed to have it within the city of Erlanger. Dave, you have been a phenomenal advocate for your libraries and just the community as a whole. Being a lifelong citizen of Northern Kentucky, I can feel your passion for this area. Every time I talk to you, you just exude excitement about what's going on here, whether it be workforce learning or, you know, the activities that you have going on, the concerts that you have at the library, being a participant at the summer send-off, like, you're always willing to be a community partner, and I'm so appreciative of that. So, thank you, and congratulations on your 20th.
Hi. Oh. The mayor has given me the microphone, which is always trouble. I just wanted to thank the city of Erlanger, because we really enjoy working with you all. The departments here are top-notch. All of your staff are wonderful. We work with your Public Works folks, we've worked with your recreation folks, we have worked with your police department occasionally, not always when we want to, but we love them, and they are very professional, very kind, and very courteous whenever they come to our building. And often, our officers don't get the recognition they deserve, and so we want to thank our officers for their support of the library over the years as well. And just thank all the citizens of Erlanger. If you look at the history of our library, you all started a library in 1914 with a women's club, holding tees with a silver tee set that we still own. Yes, so we had the tee set that the ladies raised the money to build or to buy the first books for the Erlanger Public Library, which eventually became part of the Covington Library, which eventually became part of the Kent County Library System. So we've been through numerous murders to get to one county system, which is much more efficient and much more friendly for everyone. But just wanted to take the time to say thank you to all of you and to all the support you give us. We love serving you, and we hope that you get the benefit out of having a wonderful library in your community. And as the mayor said, the Erlanger Branch is and has been, for over more than 20 years, the busiest library in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. I think that's something to be very proud of, so thank you all.
All right, thank you. Peter, can you check the list, please? All right, before we go to public comment, we are going to do the oath of office for our new city administrator. Sherri, would you like to hold the Bible for Bill? Okay. First on the public comment is Renee Wilson.
Good evening. I want to thank the council and the mayor for a wonderful summer send-off. It was so spectacular. You had people coming and going, that the numbers were great. I also want to commend the library for being such a wonderful place to go, not just for the children, but for adults too. And there's always something busy going on at that library. And I tell you, it is one of the best libraries that I have been to, and I have gone to several libraries throughout my lifetime. So thank you, Erlanger, city of Erlanger, the best city around Northern Kentucky. Thank you.
Okay, Serena Owen.
Greetings, mayor, council, all who live and serve in the city of Erlanger. My name's Serena Owen, I'm one of your school board members, and I want to also say thank you for a wonderful summer send-off. We had an amazing time, and we greatly appreciate the organization and time that went into that event, so thank you very much. And then also, wanted to invite everyone out. We have a special event that occurs in the district every year. It's called the Chelsea Ryan Festival of Hope, and it's going to be held at Lloyd Memorial High School on October the 23rd, that's a Sunday, between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m. It's centered around mental health and wellness, and our family goes and supports this event every year, and so we want to make sure that we invite you and your family, your children, to come out and enjoy the festivities. There's free food, activities, giveaways, but something, you know, very special about just gathering and learning about how to help our youth with their mental health and wellbeing. So I wanted to make sure to invite you to the Chelsea Ryan Festival of Hope on October the 23rd. And also, wanted to, I'm the founder of Community Heroes, and we've been, just like Mr. Delaney, we're friends, and we've been recognizing folk within our community for about 20 years, 10 years as Community Heroes, and then 10 years just doing random spontaneous outstanding service awards for a great service. But I wanted to ask the mayor if we could have an agenda item for your next meeting to also recognize some individuals who go above and beyond the call of duty within our community, if we can recognize them as community heroes in November or in December, whichever your schedule allows, we would like to request that agenda item. And then also, last but not least, my daughter Destiny Owen presented here about a year ago and submitted a signature, petition signatures of folks within this great city of Erlanger, and also families and students within the school district who signed a petition asking that the cities in the school district individually recognize the month of October as a student safety awareness month. And so I just wanted to bring, lift that back up and bring that to the forefront and ask the mayor if she would create a proclamation, just acknowledging and recognizing the month of October as Student Safety Awareness Month. And this proclamation, in short, just says that all entities, including the city and the city administrations of Erlanger and Elsmere, as well as the school district, will come together with students and families to make sure that, you know, we create solutions to keep our students and schools safe. So, wanted to see if the mayor would still honor and create that proclamation. And you had asked Destiny a year ago if it was okay to modify it to fit, I guess, the city standards, and so, and that was fine, so.
Okay, we can talk about this offline if that's possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we just wanted, we hadn't heard back, so just wanted to lift that up again for the safety of our students and wellbeing. So thank you, and we hope to see you on October the 23rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that completes our public comment. Okay. Next on the agenda is the mayor's report. I will make this quick. I did want to just give a shout-out to everybody that participated in the summer send-off, all the sponsors, all the vendors, all the food trucks, the bands are awesome, every single employee participated in some way, and I am so grateful for the coming together of this wonderful team. I think it's been said quite a few times that the summer send-off this year worked as a well-oiled machine, and that is our department heads giving extremely wonderful leadership to their staff members and just the true family approach that was taken at that event. I want to give a special shout-out to Cara Kramer for being an excellent emcee. She did a fantastic job being the voice and the face of the summer send-off, so thank you for your assistance. I also want to give a shout-out to Councilman Tyson Hermes for being the two-year-running pie-eating champion. I've never seen anybody eat a pie like that. It's quite disgusting, and we have the pictures to prove it, so hopefully next year you'll be doing the same thing. All right, that concludes my report. City administrators' report. Mr. Wolfack, do you have something?
I do not have a report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gatlin, city attorney's report.
There's got to be some joke somewhere in being the two-time pie-eating champion. I don't have it tonight, but there's, is that it? Maybe? There's got to be something, there's got to be something. Just a couple updates. We have a little bit of legislation tonight, I'll talk about legislation when we get there. Wanted to provide an update on a couple foreclosures, city-initiated foreclosures. I'm sure you all realize, I mean, the city at any time is probably involved in 30 foreclosures, but we don't have that many city-initiated foreclosures. They're foreclosures we get into kind of in the back end by a tax bill company or a mortgage company filing foreclosure. But two city-initiated foreclosures. One is 406 Center Street. It did sell at the courthouse steps last week for roughly $23,000. It was enough to pay the tax bill company, the city of Erlanger tax bill, Kent County's delinquent tax bills, and about half of our code enforcement liens. That's not awful in the whole scheme of things, because we never do these necessarily to make money on the code enforcement liens. The encouraging thing is, is I met the couple that purchased the property. They are going to rehab it, and then it's going to be owner-occupied. They plan on living in it, and they seem to be pretty motivated to rehab it and to build it, and they're a sweet young couple that are, you know, going to be a part of the community, and I thought that was pretty cool. Like, this was, this is one of those where it was a city-initiated foreclosure that it worked, because it was an abandoned property owned by an LLC that basically had been abandoned for five years, and now maybe we can actually get a tax-paying resident in there and fix it up. The second foreclosure, I'm not going to name the address, just because it's been a problem property that we've worked on in Public Works, has worked on in code enforcement, has worked on for several years with multiple agencies, including the Erlanger Social Worker. And I'm happy to report that as we sit here today on that property, they've cleaned everything up, there are no issues inside. Any social worker problems or concerns we have have been resolved, and we have no active code violations on that property. So again, I don't want to mention the address, I can say what it is offline, I don't necessarily want to embarrass anybody in a public meeting, but I really think the proactive, non-punitive nature that code enforcement and certainly now being spearheaded by Peter Glenn has really been helpful on a lot of these properties, where we're really just trying to get the properties back online, trying to fix the issues and get them to be good citizens again. So I think that while we had one that unfortunately went to sale, I think it was a good sign, because we have good people that are buying it, but the second one, we were able to take off of the foreclosure list just because they have no other issues. That's all I have at this time, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Glenn, capital projects.
All right, good evening, everyone. Public Works, some street capital projects that are ongoing. We just have two under construction right now, which is Sigma and Kappa, concrete street replacement projects. Sigma just started, and Kappa is nearing finishing up. Next biggest project we have street capital-wise is going to be the Kimberly, Midden, Debbie, and Jaclyn Street Overlay Project, and that's going to be starting this month. So hopefully here in the next two weeks, we'll start that, we'll coordinate that closely with the school board and everything to help mitigate traffic, especially on Kimberly. Everybody knows how busy Kimberly and Stevenson are. Park projects, finished the restroom at Silver Lake and Phase 2 of the playground improvements. So thanks to everybody here for all their support over the last three, four years getting all that completed. Turned out pretty nice, and we're going to be planning ribbon cutting here this month. So once we kind of nail down a date, we'll get that out to everybody, so hopefully everybody can come out. And it's been great improvements all the way from Division Street all the way in through the tennis courts. Ongoing park projects, Jim Vioxx and his team have started the construction document phase of Cahill Commons. We're going to be doing that project in two phases, Phase 1, Phase 2, which they're doing the construction drawings for currently this fall and winter, and then in early spring we'll go to bid on Phase 1 construction only. So hopefully by the end of June next year, we'll see some good improvements down there. The last thing I have is leaf collection. Everybody got the pamphlet? So starting on October 24th, running seven weeks until December 9th, will be our annual leaf collection program. So we go to each street, we hit each street four times. We put this pamphlet on our website, Facebook, we take it out to local businesses and banks, and hopefully everybody can get a copy of it, and if they can't, they can just visit our website, and it's there. Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, are there any other reports from department heads? Chief?
Most of you have probably seen it on Facebook today, but I just wanted to recognize the detectives for a job well done. Many of you are aware of the, I'll even call it a manhunt, for Billy Holt in the Sherborne subdivision a couple years ago. That was a fairly significant call that, I won't get into the details again in a public meeting, but it was probably one of the most disgusting, grotesque crimes. meeting, but it was probably one of the most disgusting, grotesque crimes that I have seen in my career. So, the detectives, you know, from the get-go, just like the press release said, were behind the eight ball due to some other issues that had occurred years before. And, you know, when they were told no, they continued the battle forward, and, you know, it resulted in what we saw today, or actually on October 3rd. But Billy Holt was sentenced to 18 years in prison, and from discussing it with the detectives, it sounds like he will probably do every bit of that. So, again, just, a lot of times, you know, we hear about these cases, and they're on the news for a minute, and we all kind of forget about them, but those guys have lived and breathed that case for the last two years. So, just wanted to give kudos to them.
Thank you, Chief. Emmy?
Wanted to provide an update on the discussion that we had earlier this year regarding the city of Erlanger joining the home consortium. We received word from the city of Covington staff, who administers that consortium, last week, that we have been approved by HUD to be a part of the consortium. So, as of October 1st, residents who wish to purchase a home within the city of Erlanger are eligible for that $10,000 down payment assistance program. So, I am working with the city of Covington to get a press release out, hopefully tomorrow on this, and we'll work on getting the word pushed out to lenders and realtors in the area. So, any help that you can provide in getting that word out would be greatly appreciated, and so, we're happy to have that program available for residents.
Thank you, Emmy, and thank you for all your work in getting that pushed forward. Chief Gatsi?
Just real quick, as we roll into October, October's Fire Prevention Month, but fire prevention is throughout the year, but specifically nationally, October the 9th through the 15th is Fire Prevention Week. For the month of October, the Fire Department will be attending a bunch of events throughout the city and schools, just to promote fire prevention. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Hoffman?
This month, we are recognizing former city clerk, Wilma LaBeire. Wilma retired in 1998 after 25 years of dedicated service. You can check out all her wonderful contributions on our website under the Friendship Garden wall, and she's also been, there's a history of her contributions on our social media. Also, Trick or Treat is on Monday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I know everybody has been awaiting that. All right, any other department heads? All right. Any task force reports this evening? Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, I have a report to make on Kenton County Alliance. We had 30 people in attendance today. The mission for Kenton County Alliance is prevent youth substance abuse and misuse. By joining community stakeholders to take action, promote and support healthy, strong youth and families from the cradle to the career. Kenton County joins with E3C Drug-Free Coalition. The main objectives: increase infrastructure and sharing participation from 100% of 12 community sectors; increase the number of youth receiving prevention services from 2,305 K-12 students to 2,513 in Grade 10 by 2%; reduce 30-day e-cig cigarette use among students in Grade 10 by 2%; reduce 30-day e-cig rise among students in Grade 10 by 2%; we brainstormed about ways to get our message across; Boone County needs a smoke-free ordinance; Diana Tool suggested tank bus advertising; and summer send-off is a good time to put out information. And upcoming events, there's the Festival of Hope, it's October the 23rd, from 2:00 to 5:00, at Lloyd Memorial High School. Red Ribbon Week is October 23rd through October 29th. October 24, '22 is Wear Red Day, Proud to Be Drug-Free. How many cigarettes are equivalent to a vape pen? 20. One pod a day for two weeks is the equivalent of 280 cigarettes. October the 25th is Hat Day, Put a Cap on Drugs. True or false, e-cigs contain water vapor? False. E-cigs contain aerosol, just like hairspray? October the 26th is Camo Day, Hide From Drugs. On a scale of 1 to 10, how addictive do you think nicotine can be? I don't have the answer for that one. Symptoms of nicotine addiction: cravings, anxiety, restlessness, mood swings, memory loss, inability to focus, and insomnia. On October 27th, Be Incredible, Dress Like a Superhero for Schools. Do you know the health risks of vaping? That's just rhetoric, I don't expect an answer. Vape pods can cause lung disease and cardio-lung disease, cardiovascular disease, as well as COPD. October the 28th is Pyjama Day, Don't Let Drugs Steal Your Dreams. Question of the day, and this doesn't require an answer, are you being tricked by big vape companies and social media? End of report.
That was a fun one. We enjoyed that. Please make it more question and answer. We like trivia, let's get the popcorn out.
Well, not the popcorn.
It was actually entertaining.
She provides Jimmy John's for us at our meeting.
Nice. All right. All right, any other task forces? Bids this evening, we have one Dixie Highway Railroad Underpass Painting Project. Peter Glenn, what we've all been waiting for.
Oh, you mean the project, not me, okay. Should have figured. Okay, so we took bids in September for the painting of the railroad underpass superstructure that was funded last year, carried over into this budget year. We opened bids September 6th, and we received two bids, one from Rizzo Painting and one from Baneum Painting. Rizzo was high bid at $247,000, and Rizzo Painting was low bid at $127,900. So, we move forward with Baneum Painting. We've had our pre-construction meeting, we're getting all of our insurance and documentation together. Once that's complete, then we're on to step two, which is meeting with the railroad now that we have a contract with the painting company, and then getting their final approvals. Once we achieve that, then we go back to the state. We've kind of started the process of getting our encroachment permit through the state. The city did that last budget year, but they won't give us a final approval on our traffic control plan until we have approval in hand from the railroad. So, once we get that from the railroad, back to the state we go to get that encroachment permit finalized, and then we can do our three-week project. So, any questions on that? Yes?
I was just curious. The one quote was $247,000, and the other was $127,000?
Yes, ma'am.
What, okay, I mean, that's almost 50% difference, almost?
Quite a bit difference, yes.
Was there something that stood out as the biggest difference, or just? That's a big gap.
So, we've met, yeah, it is a big difference, and is it concerning that one's so high, or is it concerning that one's so low? You know, go roll the dice on that one. So, but we've met with Baneum, we've gone over the whole contract and all the items in the bid specifications, everything's been covered, and they're a good, qualified bidder, and their bid is solid.
Is this something we'll see in 2022, or more like in the spring?
That's what we're shooting for. You know, there's a lot of obstacles in dealing with the railroad, you know, so far, it's not a expedient thing at all. So, for me to think that's going to be expedient, I'm not, that might be a little wishful thinking, but that's what we're shooting for, you know, to get, once we get all the documentation back, to set up the meetings as quick as possible, so that way we can maybe take advantage of some good weather this fall. That's what we're hoping for. Yeah, go ahead.
Follow-up question. How much did we budget for this project? I remember the allocation that we made, but I don't recall the figures.
Originally, it's $250,000.
Does that include lead removal on that structure, or is that something different?
Yeah, paint removal, sandblasting is included.
Okay.
Yes.
That's a good price.
It is. And we plan on moving forward, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you. I think it's the most convoluted project we've ever tackled. You would agree. But it's worth it. All right. Do we have any unfinished business this evening? Ms. Jasper Lucas?
I'm going to bring up the dreaded Cherry Hill subdivision semi-truck situation yet again. So, I'm sure some of you heard that two weeks ago, another semi went through evidently in an evening, and basically took out power and internet to almost the entire subdivision. The only entrance exit that was available for people to leave in the morning was Sycamore Chery, because evidently Duke or the utility companies had the other two entrances blocked to do the repairs. This time, they took down some poles, they ran over a fire hydrant, it was pretty bad. There were lots of folks that worked from home that couldn't work. I had messages from folks that were like, "I got to go find Wi-Fi somewhere, because I have to, I have to work today, and I can't, because I have no internet at my house." So, I just, I kind of just started consolidating a list of what are the issue, what is the main issue, what are the concurrent issues, where are the trucks coming in, where are they going, why are they coming in those ways that we can, that we know of? What solutions have we attempted, what's worked, what hasn't? What are other options that we have not tried, and nothing was off the table? It doesn't appear that anything we've done has completely solved it. There's no way for us to know if it's impacted it. We still have semis driving through. Hopefully, there's fewer than there would have been had we not done anything, but the problem still exists of the power's out, the internet's out, neighbors are frustrated. I've been told that there are literally residents that are getting in verbal confrontations with the truck drivers, which is very concerning as well. So, one thing I know we just, we kind of discovered at the workshop that we had back, I think it was in the spring, was that, I don't know, prior to that was really something that was on our radar, was that trucks are coming down Queen's Way, which sits in Boone County, but then they're making their way to Erlanger, which, you know, the line goes straight through the neighborhood. So, that's something that we need to consider, that I don't know had really been on the table. I have a list of 14 things that I don't think we've tried yet, or haven't, you know, exhausted all of our options. I would, I would like to propose, and I know there's been, you know, groups that have met in the past, but I would like to propose forming a task force that would work on this issue alone. That would involve council members, obviously, our staff. I know that Emmy provided a lot of the information that I consolidated here, and I appreciate that, and she was extremely diligent that day even, when I reached out to her, of driving back there to see, you know, what had happened, what's the status of the maps. But I would like to involve the warehouses that are up there, either the owners or the tenants, or both. I don't know that that, I don't, maybe that's been attempted before, I'm not sure. I reached out to a truck driver that I'm friends with and just kind of picked his brain and said, you know, "Tell me some other things that we may not be thinking of." So, the residents, obviously, you know, would need to, we would like, I would like for them to attend the task force meetings to provide input, and then also somehow involve Boone County to request their cooperation, and maybe host some kind of public hearing or workshop with Cherry Hill residents, asking for their input on the solutions, and that we provide them regular updates with what we're doing to address the issue. So, that's my proposal at this point. I just, it's, it's got to be so frustrating for them. I mean, I just can't imagine, when the power goes out in my, in my neighborhood, it's frustrating, and usually it's just a wreck on the road. I mean, it's, you know, this is happening on almost a weekly basis sometimes, and it just, I just think that we've, we've got to put our heads together and figure out, is there something else that we can do and involve the stakeholders? So, that's my proposal.
Okay, I would like to call some of our team up to talk about the situation. Raider, if you, if you would mind coming to the podium and talking about the frequency that this is happening, and we can talk about the most current situation, I mean...
I do know the one last week that took out the power, I do know that that one did come from Queen's Way. I did check, we went back through CAD and looked, and either the residents aren't calling, or we really haven't had that many. I think in the last six months, we had two that I'm aware of. I know the one last week, obviously, that was a big one, because it did take down some power lines and cable. But from our perspective, we thought that it had pretty much calmed down. I know there had been a couple trucks that had started down Lower Erlanger Road, and I don't know why, but they realized that that was not right, and they backed up. But, yeah, I have not actually, I had one contact that, I guess, lives on Sycamore, and she would call every single time that she saw a truck, and I have not heard from, from her in quite some time. The one last week, he somehow, after tearing all that down, was able to leave the scene, and our officers caught up with him behind coke. So, that was also the first time that a coke truck had actually been involved in one of those. From my understanding, I believe as of this week, the maps have been updated in Apple. I believe that, that's what I was told. But, yeah, I mean, if people are reaching out to you, we would like to hear it, because we've kind of, we were under the impression that that had kind of gone away.
I will say, whenever I've talked to anyone, and I tell people this, anytime they call me about anything, "Should I report this to the police?" And I'm like, "Yes."
Yeah.
Absolutely. I realize that it might seem minor to you, but if we have no documentation of it, we don't know what's happening. So, I have had several residents back there send me videos. I don't know if these have been reported or not, but over the last six months, just videos and photos and things like that. They might not be situations where anything was torn up, but it's definitely slowed down people getting in and out of the neighborhood, because they're sitting there waiting for a semi to try to back down the road or get through the neighborhood. So, it may not be causing any damage, but it's still very frustrating. And I just, I feel like there's, I know that Apple Maps has been updated as far as the buildings being there. The truck driver that I talked to last week, I specifically asked him at Emmy's recommendation, "Can you, you know, tell me what your map says to do if you put in this address?" And it told, and this was, he was using Google Maps, not Apple, and it told him to turn where we don't want him to turn. So, I know that we've submitted requests to Google, maybe there's more we can do that we're not aware of. That's the types of things that I feel like a task force could just sit down and investigate. I feel like it's worth the time. I feel like it's worth the time to have the task force, and I don't want to overburden anyone, but I think we have enough council members that are interested in participating, and want to find a solution for residents to this, so, and want to work with Boone County on it as well, because we recognize that that's an issue. I talked with a guy that lives in the Boone County side last week, and he basically said he doesn't think there's hardly any signage along Queen's Way, which is an obvious issue. And then one of the other residents pointed out that some of the signage at, hang on, Cherry Tree is not visible to folks before they turn. It's almost like if you turn, then you see the sign that says, "No trucks." So it may not be a matter of buying more signage, it may just be a matter of checking to see where it is and reevaluating that. Or even, I mean, you know, I know that gas station there might move a dumpster, and all of a sudden, it's in front of a sign that we thought was visible. So, I mean, if we want to discuss it more, I'm happy to, you know, have a discussion about it at the next caucus meeting. Are there other council members who are in favor of doing this as a task force?
Okay.
I just think there's value in talking to Boone County Fiscal Court, and just being in alignment. And I don't know if punitive fines are on the table, I know we at one point discussed that. I mean, there's, there's opportunity, there's things that we haven't done yet that we have talked about that are feasible. So I don't think there would be any harm in even having a short task force, a couple, couple meetings to get this a little bit further than it is right now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee this going on forever and ever and ever, hopefully. I mean, I'm hoping that we can take some of these ideas and just implement them quickly, because I feel like we've tried a lot of things so far, and maybe it just needs to be tweaked a little bit. Maybe we just need to make sure that the map things are working like they're supposed to. You know, I drove all the way down to Mineola, because we thought maybe that Mineola, the pokes coming off of Mineola were being told to turn on Queen's Way. So I drove all the way down to Mineola and then came back, never told me to turn on Queen's Way. How in the world are these semis being told to turn on Queen's Way? But when I talked to the truck driver, he told me about a couple apps that truck drivers use that we may not even, but I don't know what data source feeds them. So that's, you know, there's all these technical things as well, that we obviously need to investigate a little bit further. I think it's just getting all the right people in the right place together to have these discussions and say, "Okay, what can we do? Or what haven't we not done yet?"
Well, I would, I would suggest, I mean, you can definitely start the task force, but in the meantime, if you have 14 ideas that you have written down that we haven't tried yet, if you can email them to Chief Raider, we'll go ahead and get started going through all of those, those ideas, and figure out which ones we can implement as fast as possible. We don't need to wait around to discuss it. If you've got 14 ideas, let's, let's roll with them.
Some of them are probably very expensive ideas. When residents contacted me, I said, "Don't not suggest anything. Like, tell me every idea you ever have about this." So some of these are obviously extremely costly things, that, I mean, one is literally restructuring the entire, you know, all the intersections. That's an extremely expensive idea. So in most, I mean, all of these things aren't just my ideas, these are residents that emailed me, and, over the last two weeks. So I will definitely shoot them over to you. Keep in mind, I'm not, I did not have a budget in mind when I was doing this, so some of them are pretty far out there, so I'll send them.
Yeah, I think, and Peter, or the mayor, maybe you can correct me, but I think the negative towards doing anything permanent down there was that is part of the new construction plan, right, with, with Houston Road?
Yeah, so this fall, the reconstruction of North Houston will be, will be starting, so they're going to be closing down a portion of that. And that was going to be, you know, that was going to be happening by the state, no matter what, so that, that entrance and exit will be shut down for a period of time. So we were kind of using that as, you know, what, what are the, what's the impact of that being shut down?
And in the meantime, I mean, if anybody from council is getting inquiries about that, please tell them to call us, because, you know, like you said, if we, if we're not hearing it, we can't address it, so let me know.
Okay, any other unfinished business? Any new business? All righty, legislation.
All right, first, we have an ordinance to the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the Earlanger Code of Ordinances, Section 104, and related ordinance to modify and add to the terms of the ordinance. This is modifying the nuisance code. It is not addressing sound. If you recall from our task, our committee meeting two weeks ago, we're going to have a separate ordinance that addresses sound, that'll be at the next committee meeting. This is merely adding additional ammo for the frequent offenders, for the police to be able to get involved. So everything that is underlined is what is being added. It's, it's, it's all related to chronic nuisances and properties that are deemed chronic nuisances. This is the second reading.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read, Ms. Elmore, Ms. Kyle? Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Doan?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Elmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Motion carried.
Next is an ordinance to the City of Earlanger, Kentucky, providing for a credit of its occupational license fee for new employees as part of an economic development project by Gap Inc. under the Kentucky Business Investment Program, KRS 154.32, subsection 10 through KRS 154.32, subsection 100. This is providing a 1% credit of the City of Earlanger occupational license fees for a 10-year period of time. That'll be matched with a 3% Kentucky Personal Income Tax Credit, creating a new 4% credit for any new jobs under this KBI.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read, Ms. Nicely, Ms. Reckers? Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore? Ms. Elmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Doan?
No, ma'am.
Motion carried.
Next, we have an ordinance to the City of Earlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, amending ordinance 2388 in section 111.35, or the Earlanger Code of Ordinances, related to Sunday retail alcohol sales. What we are modifying is being struck through. In essence, we are taking away the Sunday exception for alcohol sales, so all retail alcohol sales, Sunday through Saturday, will be consistent, which will be allowed between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 2:30 a.m.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read, Mrs. Kyle and Mrs. Elmore? Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Doan?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Elmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, motion carried.
Next, we have an ordinance amending the Earlanger zoning ordinance, including: one, removing multifamily residential as a permitted use within the BP Business Park Zone; two, removing use-specific standards for multifamily residential constructed within BP, which is the Business Park Zone; and three, adopting use-specific standards for temporary uses. This was made, recommendation was made at the Kenton County Planning Commission meeting on September 1st, 2022, at a public hearing. What, the attached is, am I squeaking, or? The attached is the permitted and conditional use table that is changing, and then you can see the Article 4 Use Regulation standards. What is being underlined are the new additional temporary uses.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Ms. Kyle, Ms. Elmore, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Doan?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore? Ms. Elmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, motion carried.
Next, we have an ordinance repealing Section 96.29 of the Earlanger Code of Ordinances, an ordinance number 2343, related to restrictions of use of organized athletic teams at Flagship Park. In essence, we are just striking through all of Section 96.29, which prohibits the use of Flagship Park for any organized athletic teams. And as was discussed at committee meeting, any organized athletic teams that want to use Flagship Park will just go through the normal permitting process, so the city is aware they're there.
Okay, Ms. Hoffman, if you can please note in the minutes the first reading of this ordinance?
All right, finally, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the inter-local agreement with the City of Elsmere and the Earlanger-Elsmere School Board of Education. This is the new inter-local agreement, which adds a SRO, so there'll be at least one full-time SRO at every school in, in Earlanger. And it deals with the compensation of those SROs. That is the only modification to the normal agreement, where it'll be split one-third, 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 between Earlanger-Elsmere and the Earlanger School District.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution as read, Ms. Reckers, Mr. Doan? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, are there any announcements this evening? Okay, all right, do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Ms. Kyle, Mr. Hermes, any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carried, have a good evening.